Okay, we are reconvening. The October 14th, 2025 regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board Governance Committee will now come to order at 4:14 PM. Ms. Lady has submitted a written request to attend today's meeting virtually due to a medical conflict. She will be attending today's meeting from Herndon, Virginia. All in favor? It is unanimous for those at the table. Is this lady on yet or still on her way? Okay, great. Okay, in order, we're going to certify the closed meeting. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the committee to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board Governance Committee convened a closed meeting on October 14th, 2025, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the committee during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Dr. Anderson, a second. Mr. Frisch, all in favor? That is unanimous for all of us at the table. Okay, we have confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. Ms. Marin, I, it's me, I call on you, Dr. Anderson, for a motion.
I'm sorry, this is hysterical. I make a motion to move Policy 2611, as discussed in the closed meeting, to the full board.
I'm sorry, I don't have a script. Policy 8240 first, please.
Oh, I didn't know we had a script, sorry. I was working from memory here.
Same thing, just 8240.
I moved that the Governance Committee send Policy 8240, as revised and discussed and closed, to the full board for adoption.
I will second. All those in favor? We are unanimous for that motion.
You have got to stop typing, Christina.
Okay, I call on Dr. Anderson for a second motion.
I moved that the Governance Committee send Policy 2611 to the full board for approval, as amended along the terms and conditions discussed in the closed motion.
Do I have a second? Ms. St. John Cunnings, all those in favor? That is unanimous at the table. All right, so those policies on their way. So, here we are in the public portion of the Governance Committee meeting. And what we are doing is we are prioritizing review of some policies that have been reviewed, and we just hadn't gotten onto the agenda. So today, we are going to speak specifically around first three policies. And then, we are going into a grouping of policies that we've selected that may have fewer edits to do. So, we are going to start with Policy 4450, Communication Between the School Board and Its Employees. So, Dr. Reed, would you please present and bring us up to speed on item Policy 4450?
So, thank you, Ms. Marin. Policy 4450, we updated, we added a philosophy section, though it's my understanding that we may have that amended. And that's new. And then, we added responsibilities. And really, that was it. Those were the basic changes at this time.
Okay, Mr. Frisch, why don't you kick us off?
I have two things I would like to change, actually, three. I'm going to read them and then I'll make motions. The first is an update to the philosophy, which is a little bit more extensive than the other two have been, because it's a little clunky in terms of reading it. So, the new philosophy would read, "The School Board affirms its belief that full consideration be given to the concerns of its employees, and encourages their participation in decision-making affecting their employment with the school system." Yeah, so I moved to, well, I've already shared this with everybody, but I'm going to put it in a fresh email.
A motion by Mr. Frisch for the proposed language, and a second by Dr. Anderson. Mr. Frisch, would you like to talk further about that? No? Dr. Anderson, no? Okay, is the language up on the screen? "Affirms its belief," is that the only thing?
No, that's not the only thing.
Yeah.
Hang on, hang on a second, everybody. I will, I have an email ready. I already sent it, but this is 4450? Okay, here we go. It's on its way. I'm including everything in one. All right. It should be in your inbox.
And so, Mr. Frisch, can I confirm that this is language that you suggest to be included at pretty much all of the philosophy sections?
Well, part of this is, but there were some issues with, some of these philosophies do not lend themselves to this formulation without other adjustments. Very, most of them do. This one does not. And so, I've, the amendment that I sent and just resent. So, it does add the, "The School Board affirms its belief that," but then there are further changes after that. I'm, I just don't know how to make it any easier. This is the same one. So, you're going to strike "to give," so that it reads "belief that full consideration be given" "to the concerns of its employees," "and encourages their participation in decision-making affecting their employment with the school system."
So, that is the language up there. And we will see this.
And the edits are there because I wanted to remove the word "employee" from being used six times in one sentence. That's an exaggeration, obviously, and then to standardize the format.
Okay, so that's the motion. Mr. Frisch has moved, Dr. Anderson has seconded. They are not speaking further. Does anyone else have comments? Ms. Mercy, Jason Cunnings? I don't either, so I will call the motion. All those in favor? That is unanimous at the table, to adopt those edits.
All right, number two, on page one, it reads, this is the paragraph beginning, "The Division Superintendent shall establish and arrange to regular, for regular meetings, blah, blah, blah." First question is whether we have to say "Division Superintendent" every time we address the superintendent, because we have plenty of policies that just say superintendent. So, that's something to consider. Secondarily, I have an amendment to the end of this paragraph where it begins, "It shall also be the policy of," that's superfluous language, so we're going to strike "it shall also be the policy of." Almost there, there you go. So, you're going to strike "it shall also be the policy of." And you're going to add the word additionally, comma, so it's additionally the school board. Shall. Instead of "to." Instead of "to." "Geared directly from representatives of employees at times made available for this purpose during the School Board's regular business meetings." And the reason for this, well, I've made the motion.
I will second the motion.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt those changes under Section 4, Responsibilities?
Yes.
Ms. Marin, I apologize, I think I need to be clear about my presentation on this particular policy. In the memo, there's a highlighted sentence from Ellen Kennedy. So, we were a little unclear, since this is a school board and employees, whether this was employees in the School Board office or employees writ large. Because employees writ large, collective bargaining governs all of this, and we would sunset the policy. But we weren't sure if you wanted a policy that was simply your direct employees. But I think if we do, or if you do want something that's your direct staff, then we would want to craft something different. So, at this point, this was what was initially drafted, and then the realization, because this was drafted last year, and then the realization with the collective bargaining agreement being completed, I would recommend sunsetting this, because really, the interactions between employees and the board are now governed by the collective bargaining resolution.
The other thing that I would add, so I, I made these suggestions under the assumption that, I guess, this is permissible with collective bargaining. I didn't think it was. Hence, you'll see my third edit was to add, "Section E shall be in compliance with the School Division's collective bargaining agreement." The problem with that is that you're basically saying, "We're going to do all of these things unless it's not in compliance with collective bargaining, and none of these things are in compliance with collective bargaining." So, they are, it is, it is basically, nothing can stop a staff member from coming to a board meeting and sharing their views on any topic that could be under collective bargaining. But it is an entirely other thing for the board to solicit commentary about things that could be collective bargaining. And so, I would be in favor of sunsetting the policy. And in sunsetting it, at the meeting, when we sunset it, have a statement read with it, similar to how we did on other topics.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Dr. Anderson, and then I have a comment.
Yes, a couple of things, and I'm just going to try to speak to all of these things, even though some of them may no longer be the case. I do think we need to identify Division Superintendent in all of the places, because we are speaking to the Division Superintendent, not the Assistant Superintendent, not the Regional Superintendent. We have too many people with a similar title.
That's good.
So, it, I think, it, it's, we should be clear. Secondly, one of the things that I was going to ask under the Responsibility Section is to break it up into two pieces, an A and a B. And I understand the collective bargaining world, but we still have a space where employees can still come and speak with us. And the Section 4 here, I'm sorry, 5 here speaks to grievance. So, there's other things embedded here, so I'm not sure how we would treat that.
I think the grievance is also addressed in the collective bargaining agreement. So, you would want to, the collective bargaining agreement really crosswalks to this.
Sure. But we do have a host of employees that are not under the CBA, because they are part-time or hourly. Some are, and some are not. We still have thousands of people that need some sort of communication from us. Do we tighten this up to say that there's a CBA and it needs to be, and according to? I would hate to just remove this altogether, because that will shut down the opportunity for anybody else to know how, well, can I go speak to the School Board? Granted, I do think that the first section under Responsibilities, which is arranging regular meetings, that spoke a little bit more to the 4210s, which clearly don't need to happen. But we have other people, too, that are not under a CBA that will want to be afforded the same, well, they'll be, they'll want to be afforded the communication path.
We could take that back and think about, I would want to take that back to the collective bargaining team to identify for you specifically who is not represented, and then what we might contemplate doing. But I think this particular policy really, the collective bargaining does cover for the vast majority of our employees.
And can I change?
Just one last thing, and I will say, just going back to look at the title, it is communication between the School Board and its employees. So, I wonder if we could lean more into how and when folks can engage with us, rather than through staff, which is typically what has happened with the 4210s. That's it.
You want to go ahead, Mr. Frisch?
I want to, with unanimous consent, withdraw my second amendment, which we didn't finish. And I'd like to make a motion to sunset this policy and direct the superintendent to work with staff on a potential policy for communicating with staff who are not part of collective bargaining.
Okay, so let's just confirm. Motion made to sunset Policy 4450 and direct the superintendent to create a policy, or language policy? To create a policy that?
Develop, to draft a policy for communication with?
Employees not covered under collective bargaining?
Correct. For board consideration.
Okay, so that is made by Mr. Frisch and seconded by Ms. St. John Cunnings. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Frisch?
I think this addresses the big issue. And I think when the board takes action at a future meeting, it needs to be accompanied with the statement about why this is happening. It doesn't necessarily have to be timed with a policy that pertains to nonrepresented staff. But I think that that would probably accomplish macro-level goals. This policy in particular, virtually every element of it is dictated by collective bargaining. And in far more specificity, that the board has already adopted and approved than this policy. I think there are even parts of this policy that might contradict the collective bargaining agreement that we have.
Agent Cunnings?
I agree. I think, you know, this is the first year that we've had collective bargaining, and I know there are pain points, because things used to be done the old way. And I know that's kind of a hard adjustment for everyone, for employees and School Board members. But I think the more consistent we are, and the more we follow what everybody wanted, then it'll just be easier for us to move into that lane that everybody had wanted, and to sunset not just this policy, but maybe other practices.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. My wondering, I have two. One, should we sunset this or just revise it? Because it essentially will have the same kind of titles.
Legal has recommended sunsetting it.
Okay. And two, how do we get to the stage where we have a red line copies when there's a glaring issue that is in front of us, which is a CBA? I'm trying to figure out.
It was edited before we had a CBA, so we?
I was on governance when we did this previously. So, I remember this.
I don't even remember. Okay, that was my other wondering, thank you.
Well, I, I expect that nothing's coming to us that isn't timely, so I would have expected that it had been reviewed. I actually have, I can support the motion, and I had that question, if it was suggested to us. I also wondered about Policy 4510, Communication With Employee Organization. That one was updated in 2024 to reflect collective bargaining. 4510 is cross-referenced in this policy. I, as I, so two things. One is, as chair, I'd like us to move swiftly through this one, and then actually skip to naming school facilities, and spend the last 15 minutes, if we can, seeing what we can swiftly move through of Group B. On this policy, 4450, what I want to share is I had that same question about impacts of collective bargaining on several other policies. It was the contracts, Policy 4110. That would seem to be something that would be, I want to just make sure that staff hear this. Okay, you ready? So, in addition to this 4450, 40, also on our Group P, Group B today, 4120, contracts. I, this, the philosophy isn't really clear, but it also talks about supplemental, and is this about the coaches? The other thing about assignment of personnel, Policy 4230. That's not under collective bargaining. Suspension Of Employees, which is Policy 4270. 4280, Lay Off And Recall. 4290, Discontinuance Of Employment. 4411, Support Employee Obligations And Rights. Even 4418, I mean, aren't all of these subject to collective bargaining now? Are these, and have they been reviewed?
So, for example, 4270.3, Suspension Of Employees, which is 4270 in the memo. It has actually, the updated language is to reflect the collective bargaining language, the FDU language. So, we've gone through a number of these HR policies as a result of collective bargaining to put the language of collective bargaining into the regulation.
Well, that's the regulation, but is it the policy? I guess, look.
Sorry, policy.
Well, 4450 is not reflective of collective bargaining, right? So, but now, I'm being told that some of the policies in Group B are reflective. You could see how this could be confusing, and so, I'm fine, I'm fine to support the motion, 4550. I think we also need to be clear, as we work through the vernacular that we use in policies, that unless we say "School Board Office Employees," that Division Employees or School Board Employees are all of the employees in the School Division. So, can we be clear on that? So, if it says "School Board Employees," that's all the people who work in the School Division. And "School Board Office Employees" would be particularly for the School Board Office. Okay, that's cool. And then, do we want to just agree on Division Superintendent, rather than Superintendent for all intents and purposes? That seems like a yes? Okay, great. So, no other comments? Did you have another comment, Mr. Frisch? All right, so I shall call the vote for Policy 4550. The motion is to sunset Policy 4550, and direct the superintendent to return with language for those not covered under the CBA, collective bargaining agreement. All those in favor? That is unanimous for those on the table.
Just, it's 4450, right?
It is 4450. Apologies if I missaid that. Okay. Wonderful. Let's turn to Policy 8170, Naming School Facilities, because we will be doing this soon. Dr. Reed, do you want to present an intro to Policy 8170, Naming School Facilities? And then I see Mr. Frisch is ready to go after that.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. This, the purpose, again, in the memo updating October 14th, is to establish policy regarding the naming or renaming, and the permanent dedication or naming. It was reviewed and updated by the Office of Facilities, Capital Programs, Chief Engagement And Experience, and Legal. Section 1 was rewritten for simplification. Section 3, the philosophy section, was added. And the term "renaming" was added throughout. Certain portions of the policy were removed, as they are operational in nature. Several will statements were revised to "shall" to reflect items the School Board desires to be addressed in regulation. The Naming Rights Agreement Paragraph, Section 4, was rewritten for clarification. And there's one legal reference that's been updated associated with this policy. There is a matching Regulation 8170, and matching VSBA policy is attached for your review.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch?
Yeah, I agreed with one of Ms. Marin's comments about this, that the philosophy needed a bit of work to align with, I think, the spirit of the board, which is encapsulated in the regulation. So, I circulated a draft change to the entire philosophy. And it would now read, "The School Board affirms its belief that the naming or renaming of school facilities serves to reflect the values, history, and diversity of Fairfax County Public Schools and its communities. This policy guides the process for selecting names," and this part could just be, the second part could be cut. "This policy guides the process for selecting names for new schools, renaming existing schools, and dedicating areas of school facilities or grounds to honor individuals who have made significant contributions to the mission of FCPS." So, I'll make an amendment, a motion to amend the philosophy.
I'll second it. Mr. Frisch, you want to speak any further to your motion? Okay, I really appreciate it. It's really clear, we talk about the three different reasons why we'd be doing things, you know, new school, renaming, and dedicating an area. I don't know that I want to say that it has to honor individuals, you know, to recognize, you know, something significant, or to recog, I don't know. I just, it doesn't have to be an individual, right? So, how could we, like, I wonder, maybe we can noodle on that language while we go forward here in this conversation.
That's reflective of the policy.
It is. To, maybe it's to honor individuals and happenings, or, I don't know. Because we could just name a facility Western High School, right? Like, it's, that could be the new name of the high school, so.
The names are just for the, like, the gymnasium, or the auditorium, or whatever.
Oh, that's just for the dedication. I see. Of dedicating areas, got it. Okay, then I am fully in favor, which is good, because I seconded. Other comments? Dr. Anderson? Yeah, oh, sorry.
I know, I, we're in the open meeting, so I'm doing that. Mr. Frisch, I'm trying to follow what you have provided and what was currently there. This is in the philosophy section, correct?
Yes.
The philosophy section, as it stands, the red line says, "To recognize private and corporate entities." Did you drop that in what you?
What I just emailed around is the current.
Okay, it's not what you sent earlier?
I don't remember exactly what I sent earlier. The version that I have in front of me also has this language that I sent around.
I could barely see that, but I don't seem to have a new version that has come through yet.
The subject line of the email is 8170.
It just, it hasn't populated yet.
Dr. Anderson, the, the part of the sentence that talks about recognizing private or corporate entities was connected to naming rights. So, if someone were to pay for naming rights, they would be recognized. But it wouldn't be, if naming rights aren't a part of this.
This is just the philosophy part.
Yeah.
So, in the philosophy section, I just want to see what call sent. Okay, I, I'm fine with what you've proposed, because I was uncomfortable with the private and corporate part with the naming and renaming.
The reason I rewrote it entirely.
Mostly speak, to me, that piece is speaking to the building, not necessarily an individual gym that we're naming after someone who's provided quite a bit. So, I don't think I see in what you are substituting provisions for private and corporate entities, correct?
Yeah, it's just the philosophy.
Okay, so I'm fine with that. The other thing that I wanted to raise is going back to purpose, as we're talking about just the vernacular. The purpose, as it stands, is to establish a policy. That's not a purpose. The purpose here could be to determine guidelines, or to determine the provisions. We have to get to the activity. Do you want me to give you the wordage?
After we finish, and I finish my turn.
Oh, okay. Oh, I was just going to speak to all of my things all at once.
That's what I'm attempting to do, too.
We have the motion for philosophy up, so let's address that first, please.
All right, I'm fine with the philosophy that has been shared.
Any other comments? No? Or, Dr. Reed?
I just, the naming rights isn't only for someone who's done something.
This is just the philosophy. It has nothing to do with the rest of the policy.
No, I know, but the naming rights were, unless, I can't see what you have, but the naming rights were in the philosophy that we submitted.
I understand that.
Okay, oh, you took them out?
No, they're not in the philosophy.
But I do, for me, I don't want naming rights in here, because that's a whole other conversation, and that's financial. I, my thought at this policy is we're just talking about naming, renaming, and dedicating things for no fee when we have new, renewed, or we want to honor someone. So, by taking it out of philosophy, we are taking it out of this policy.
Not, if the board chooses to do that, yes. But the philosophy doesn't have to be a regurgitation of the entire policy that follows. Otherwise, why don't we just call it a summary? I mean, like, what I'm proposing is something that is a philosophy around naming for these specific things. If there is an effort for other things, we can get to that when we, when we get down to that part of the policy, I think.
No, thank you. And this was something, again, that we talked about with the last committee, purpose and philosophy. And I think I've heard here that the philosophies in these drafts really didn't hit it. And I'm wondering, for our next meeting, should we School Board members take a stab at it? Because it just doesn't seem like, you know, staff can capture what we as School Board members want to bring to it. But right now, there's a purpose to establish this policy that talks about renaming and permanent dedication or naming, and that's different than what is proposed in the philosophy. So, it sounds like there's agreement with the philosophy. I wonder if we can just not include a purpose right now?
Can I finish the rest of my-
I'm sorry, I don't know where anyone's turn is, but sure.
Well, we have to, we have, we stopped short of voting before the, yeah.
Okay.
The motion is the philosophy.
Right. It's just that the question is, is it supposed to include naming rights? That's the question that I have, is, if naming rights is somewhere else in this policy, it seems like it should be included in philosophy as, what is our philosophy when people want to pay us money to name something after them?
No, I'm fine with what he is proposing.
Okay.
I think there's some space for us to bring up what you're discussing elsewhere.
Yeah, and I don't want to bring it up today.
But this is the big why, of why we're engaging in this at all, and I think this is a good reflection of that.
Right. I don't think, I don't think you have to have naming rights on here. I think that the philosophy is, this is what we're going to do. If further on in the policy, we talk about naming rights or not naming rights, it has to follow the philosophy of how we're going to name it, whether you pay or not. So, I just don't think it has to be there. I think the, it's overarching.
Okay.
And then, the rest then gets into the weeds.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. I think we're in agreement, so we could vote on this.
Can I muddy the waters a little bit more? I actually think the second piece to what you have, which is, "This philosophy guides the process for selecting names," that's the purpose. That piece will serve very, very well as the purpose.
But it doesn't, if you read the whole sentence. It speaks specifically to dedications.
Okay, good.
Well, and let's not get, again, we still need to confirm that we want the general outline of policies to be purpose, philosophy, responsibility, so there's misalignment over our policies. So, okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. So, all those in favor of the motion to change the philosophy as appearing on that with the one spelling check updated for individuals? Please raise your hand. That is unanimous? Okay, we have a philosophy. So, here's where we're at. We have 15 minutes left. This is an important policy to consider and get approved to the board. Are there any burning things that remain?
Yes.
Yes?
I still have-
Go, Mr. Fish.
All right. Page 2, with unanimous consent, number 6, should not be the sale of naming rights. We can talk about naming rights in a moment, but I'm cleaning up some language. Remove the word "the" from "sale of naming rights." All right.
Yes.
Well, I mean, it speaks specifically to sale.
Without objection, we will adopt removing the word "the."
I was unclear about why the items on page 2 were bulleted. It didn't seem that they needed to be bulleted. So, I would, without objection, remove those bullets. They are not dependent on the previous section, or, nor are they illustrative of that. So, you just take the bullets out, without objection.
Without objection? Look, Dr. Anderson, yeah?
And then, finally-
You could remove bullets, Dr. Anderson?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
Okay.
The final change was that there are two bullets and a sentence that follow that about naming rights that didn't make any sense in the way that it was constructed. So, the amendment would be as follows. "The sale of naming rights shall only take place when a naming rights agreement is adopted." Period. That's the first sentence. And then, you take the two bullets, and you finish out that paragraph, which follows the style of this policy. So, it would read, "This agreement, at minimum, at a minimum, shall not confer on any entity an enforceable right, entitlement, or other interest of any sort relating to the use, possession, or control of any school board assets. Additionally, comma, the agreement shall not confer on any entity the power to direct or control the management or operation of any FCPS facility or program." That is the language that I circulated to everybody earlier, and, again, as we picked up this conversation. So, that is to clarify, if we are moving forward with the naming rights thing, and I think we should, and then, we can have a conversation about what those regulations look like that kind of put that into practice. I think this is a good way of doing it. It requires, you know, that there's an agreement in place before anything happens, et cetera. So, that's my amendment for page 3.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed changes to naming rights as proposed.
Second.
Okay. I don't need to speak to it. I think Carl encapsulated it well. Dr. Anderson, did you want to speak to the naming rights language?
I'm in support of that, but I-
Okay. Well, let's, about naming rights?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not going to stop you from voting for the language as proposed.
Well, let me ask you, okay, chair hat. We have 12 minutes left. Is there any hope of getting to Group B policies? Do we want to talk a little bit more about future meeting? What do you all want to do?
I think we should, we could probably tackle some of the Group B policies.
Then, I think, a conversation about policy, naming, or naming rights, has got to go to another time. Because if we agree on it being included here, that sounds like another financial conversation, right? Or something else, but we got to make a decision. We're trying to use this time. What I'm suggesting is-
Well, we could vote on the amendment.
So, the amendment to update the language about naming rights, is that here?
Well, where do you want me to send it? Okay.
Okay, so, the motion on the table, let's please act on that, is Mr. Fish proposed. It's about the sale of naming rights only taking place when naming rights agreement is adopted. And I will, I have the language here, and I will personally go back and review it and make sure it is exactly as Mr. Fish emailed it at 4:35, so we can vote. All those in favor of that language? Please raise your hands. That is unanimous for us at the table to adjust the naming rights. Mr. Fish, did you have other things to consider?
I just have questions about why we've removed all of the other steps for renaming that used to be community meetings, superintendent actions, et cetera.
Okay. Well, that's important. Can we, so, you want to talk more about naming rights, but that's not super urgent? And now, at least, we have something in there that says that we have it?
I would love to be able to ask my question.
Well, we have 10 minutes, and we really should-
I would also ask a question.
Right, but this is involving something that, it seems like we're going to need to talk about community engagement, more importantly than naming rights of some future agreement, if we want to get this to the board at the next regular meeting, so it's in place to name Western High School. So, I think the community engagement piece seems relevant, more urgent.
I would have already asked my question.
Hey, can you ask your question about community engagement?
I'm going to ask my question about naming rights, because that's what my question is. Dr. Reed, just so I'm clear, we don't have any spaces in which we have sold naming rights, correct? Or do we? Like stadiums, fields?
I am unaware of that here in Fairfax County Public Schools.
So, this is going to be a brand-new practice?
I believe that it's been, because it's crossed out. Let me go back and look here.
This is new.
I believe it's new, and then, it's been crossed out as new, as I'm trying to look at both of this.
Well, it's in the current policy, so-
Well, that's what I-
It has existed, just like-
Yes, it has existed.
Executive limitations existed before they did it.
It just hasn't been used, to my knowledge.
Is why it needs a whole, full conversation.
Okay, well, I mean, is this not it? This is the policy around it. If not now, then when?
Another time.
So, this is not moving forward?
Not now. That could be part of the regulation. I think, right now, with now nine minutes left, let's see if we can-
I, I'm so sorry, Ms. Marin, I'm not trying to be dense, but if we're not speaking about this before we send it to the full board, so when do we speak about it? Because we don't really speak about the regulations, because that's not necessarily in our review, they're just shared with us.
Dr. Anderson, do you want this policy updated before we approve Western High School's name?
I, I, I want a lot of things, but I also, I'm trying to understand what is the next space?
The next step is approving this policy before the meeting. Do you want-
Because we name plenty of schools without this policy in place.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we extend the meeting by 15 minutes? Address these two lines of questions? Close up this policy, and then, we can move on to what we can get done out of the option-
And I'm happy to wait, I'm just trying to figure out when that would be.
It doesn't seem you are happy to wait. So, I would take Mr. Fish's recommendation. If everyone can stay an extra 15 minutes to 5:15, I know I need to run to a boundary meeting. If you want to ask your questions right now about naming rights, if others can stay, can people stay for 15 minutes? Is there an affirmative? Yes?
I'm fine with that, but-
Okay, then go ahead, please.
I mean, I think I started asking my question, and then, you were-
Just do it.
I, I'm confused.
We're killing more time, too.
So, regarding the naming rights component, Dr. Reed, what are we anticipating? So, do we have a regulation right now that speaks of that component?
I'm looking. I believe we have a regulation that matches 8170, and it was posted, and it was effective February of 2020.
And it outlines cost, et cetera? Do we have, like, does it go to the granular level? I'm so sorry, I didn't see it.
It essentially talks about it, it has naming rights on page 5 of the regulation to recognize sponsorship and contributions, and it has limitations to naming rights, limiting them to an initial period of five years. They're reviewed on a periodic basis, and the board shall have discretionary authority to rescind a naming right at any time based on action of the entity. I'm very familiar with doing naming rights, and often, I've been in a prior division where a particular entity went with a five-year contract, $3,000 a month, to have their entity as part of the naming on the stadium. They redid all the signage, and we utilized their naming rights to turn over the turf, because we were in a, you know, tight-budget community. So, I don't believe we have any such agreements here, to my knowledge, in Fairfax County Public Schools. That has not been our practice, although the regulation does allow for it, as does our current policy.
Thank you. My last question is regarding those limitations. You talked about the time. Do we have a location limitation? For example, could someone potentially purchase the buildings as the name, the name of the building? Or is it turf, gyms? Do we have that kind of space guidelines?
Yes, ma'am, we do. On page 5 of the regulation, section 7 indicates naming rights shall be assigned to appropriate areas of school facilities, parren, library, or media center, common area, gymnasium, or to school grounds, parren, field, courtyard, stadium, and parren.
Thank you.
Mr. Fish?
So, one of the things that was surprising to me, if you look at the redline version on page 2 at the bottom, it begins with the three paragraphs that are, have been stricken through. "If the board decides to consider a school name change, there will be blah, 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 blah." That spells out the process that we've used for the last several name changes since Justice, after Justice, right? This, this is what we changed to adopt after Justice. So, this governed Lewis, Mosaic, and Woodson. Is there a reason that, what I'm getting at now is, is there a reason that we cut that? And can we just unstrike those three, those paragraphs?
I believe the reason it was cut was that there's not a legal requirement for this in a policy, and I believe the paragraphs are in the regulation, but I, there's absolutely no reason why they couldn't be uncut in the policy.
If they're in the regulation, if they're in the regulation, I think that's fine. The regulation is the embodiment of our policy, it's not just for staff.
So, I, I think this raises a good point, and I think also, saying that a naming request needs to be through a board forum topic, that still stays in there, and that's really not the only way it happens. There was also the comment about magisterial representatives. I wonder, in the interests of time, if that, if we can remove some of that, or reorganize it to say, you know, there should be an appropriate community engagement process, which would be defined in regulation, and school board member involvement, you know, that could also be defined in regulation, because this is all kind of not how we do things right now, or-
This is how we rename a school. What you're describing is the dedication of pieces of the building or whatever, and that is described in detail in regulation. That's what you and I followed recently for our two dedications, but this is what's, has the red lines through it right now, is how we've done all of the renaming since Justice.
Yeah, and, and, look, if you pause, please, Ben Clark. Look, the school renaming request will be initiated through a board forum topic, and then, the magisterial and the at-large, and-
That's correct. That's how all-
I know that's how we do it, but if we're, there's a suggestion to remove how we do community engagement, the thing, the language stays about a board forum topic, and we do more than just a forum topic to have a new name, so, right? Like, all of this is not, I think, what we want to say. What we want to say is, there's got to be community engagement of some sort, right? Whether we keep that in or different. I think the issue was, when it's a newly bought school that already has a name, that was the stipulation around-
I don't, so, I removed all of the stuff about purchasing schools, because that's like a once-in-a-hundred-years thing, and it's just a new school. It doesn't have a name. It is our property in the western part of the county, in the same way that Dunloring doesn't have a name, because it's not been named by our board.
But Justice had a name, and Lewis had a name.
They were renamed, and we have a policy for that.
So, I just want to be clear that the crux here is, if you, the regulation is posted, and the, what's in red and struck is in the regulation, I also think it could sit in the policy. We're just, one of the asks of the committee has been to not be redundant, so we were just trying to do that. But I think it can be in both. It's important. It's something, when we do it, everyone wants to know. So, I, I, the staff have no objection to unstriking those three. They just also, I just want to point that, we didn't, like, do away with them, they're listed in the regulation, we still want to follow it.
Okay, but, Mr. Fish, you just said, we're not talking about renaming, but the philosophy we adopted does talk about renaming. So, it's not just naming.
Yes. It talks about naming, renaming, and dedications. KAA is a name that somebody chose for a building that no longer exists, right?
Right, but one of our existing schools, though. If you, can you keep that-
Then, you go to renaming. It's also spelled out in here. It's a-
But, so, just think about, like, when you have a new baby, they don't have a name. So, KAA for us is a new baby, they don't have a name. We're not renaming KAA, because it's our new baby.
Right, can you just one more?
But then, if, yeah, so, we're naming it. Renaming is-
Right, but, but colleagues, this section is just, look, the philosophy articulated naming and renaming, and then, areas of facilities, okay? Now, the guidelines for school facilities is not as delineated.
I understand what you're, you're saying, that we spell out in detail the renaming, but don't spell out, which I think could easily be solved. If we unstrike all of the red stuff, let me explain how. From a process along with a set of blah, 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 from that point down to the end of this section, if you unstrike that, and in the first paragraph where it says, "A school renaming request, blah, blah, blah," it could be, "A school naming or renaming request, blah, blah, blah." And then, that takes care of it. And they follow the same process.
I think there's, I, I want to go back to what's been struck, and I know it lives in the regulation, but the regulation, as we all know, is subject to change by the superintendent. This is a board activity. I'd like it to be embedded in the policy itself. As Dr. Reed says, staff has no objections. I'd like to motion for this to return back to this. And I'd like for us to kind of mirror the same sequence, as Ms. Marin is saying, for renaming and naming of the procedures, and consider adding a community engagement paragraph to speak to the expectation of outreach.
In addition to the callouts for community engagement that are already there?
Just kind of giving it its own section? So, we just put it together, like, the community engagement?
The easier path is that it's already there, and it doesn't require an additional amendment The easier path is that it's already there and it doesn't require an additional amendment to get us out of here.
Just a title, where, where is it under?
Just a title. It's in the red, struck-through text about the two opportunities for community engagement. And then we have a board agreed to regulation for community engagement around facilities.
Well, maybe just giving it a heading, just so it gets, it stands out a little bit more.
But I think Ms. Marin is trying to get us out of here and so if, and that requires us to approve a policy as done, so it could, we would be done if we just accepted that the previous language was sufficient, because it includes community engagement. And there is no easy way to just put a section in for community engagement without sitting here and wordsmithing it.
And is, does the regulation have a little bit more robust language about how that looks? Because I agree, I think, I think the purpose of putting this in the policy again is overarching and saying that the board considers that community engagement important and leaving it in there. So, I completely agree with that. I don't think we have to operationalize how that's going to look.
CPDC and PEC developed with facilities, a robust communications and community engagement plan for all facility-related items.
Then I'm good with that. I don't think we have to get down into the weeds at this level.
If I could amend Dr. Anderson's request and say to unstrike the language that's been removed entirely from a process along with, to the end of that section, and then in the paragraph that says, where it says, "A process along with a set of guidelines", it would now say, "Guidelines for naming or renaming", and in the following paragraph where it says, "A school renaming", would say, "A school naming or renaming." Yes, everything below that point is unstricken, except for the fixed members. Why don't you finish unstriking? Are you done? Okay, okay, great. And then in that first paragraph, go back up, it would say, "A process along with a set of guidelines for naming or renaming", and then to the next full paragraph, "A school naming or renaming", in the next paragraph, "If the board decides to consider a school name change", sorry, "If the board decides to name a new school or consider a school name change", in that last paragraph on the page, "During this initial comment period, community members will be encouraged to submit naming or renaming suggestions", and the final paragraph, "If the school board votes in support of a new school's name or a school name change, in support of a new school's name, or a school name change, blah, blah, blah."
Why couldn't we just add community engagement at top of that section that says, "If the school board", it would be section six?
Because there's two sections, there's two sections in there about community engagement.
Right, but it could capture both of them. It would, it would encompass both of those, because the very first one starts as, "If the board", right under the dark section, the black section, the first red section that's been, that's been unstricken. So, that's the community engagement piece right there. That could be section six and that will just take care of it. It becomes clear as to what the expectation are, what the expectation is.
I mean, I would be opposed because it's not only about community engagement and adding a heading does absolutely nothing to the policy.
That little section is only about from the bottom.
It talks about the board voting on things and, and what final action is, et cetera.
Am I seeing a different copy than yours?
You're talking about bef, before the part that begins, "The superintendent will review, blah, blah, blah"?
Yes, above that.
I would say that an equal part of that sentence is the superintendent coming with names, so again-
So, how, what motion, what action can we take at this point?
To, well, this is an offshoot of Dr. Anderson's request for unanimous consent to re-add the stuff that was struck with the changes that now account for new schools.
And you know what? And we could move this forward and bring it to the full board, right? And let our colleagues also ruminate on it and we could adjust it at the dais. I think that's most expedient. We can, we've started the ball rolling. So, can I call the question and the motion and do-
Just go to a vote. Nobody's plugging it up.
No, okay. So, is there a vote to reinstate the red line version about community engagement, those three paragraphs?
The changes discussed.
With the changes just discussed?
They are being reinstated.
That is, yes, so those three-
All the way through the end of the section.
The school facility, right? Yep. So, those three paragraphs about community engagement with the changes just discussed. All those in favor? Mr. Frisch, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Dr. Anderson, and myself. So, that is unanimous. So, we will send this forward to the board for action, which means we can also discuss it with our colleagues prior to that. And we are on schedule. Amazing. Question, of the Group B policies, are there any, that anyone has no questions on that we could possibly move forward? I have four that I have no questions on. No, you don't have any? Remember, this is supposed to be the ones that had-
I understand that mine are all, with very few exceptions, very basic things that are like changing the philo- all of them are changing the philosophy, part two, the school board affirms its belief. A handful of them are a little bit more detailed than that, but only changes to the philosophy.
Anyone else have anything to say about the Group B policies? I had no questions on 2660, which was voluntary uniforms in public school, 4101, which is responsibilities of the Department of Human Resources, 4140, which is physical and mental medical examinations, and 4230, assignment of personnel.
Could I try and get unanimous consent on some very basic things for all of these?
Sure.
All right. Policy 3335, adding the school board affirms its belief to the beginning of the philosophy and striking the philosophy of advanced K-12 programs is the belief.
Is there any way to do this, like, by chunks of policies or what's best for you?
No, because they're all-
A little bit different?
If there's no objection, we can get through them quickly.
There is no objection for me.
All right.
Okay, so that will be changed.
Yeah, I'm going to come back to 3355 because I had to rewrite that one. Policy 3415, we are only adding the language, "The school board affirms its belief that", at the beginning of philosophy.
Is there any objection?
All right.
All right, we're good to change that in 3415.
4101 also needs more changes, but 4120, adding, "The school board affirms its belief that", to the beginning, and then in the last sentence, "These contracts", and it's protect both parties and ensure.
I am okay with that. Any objections?
All right.
Okay.
Policy 4140, we're just adding, "The school board affirms its belief that", to the beginning of that one.
4140, no objection there.
4230, we're adding just, "The school board affirms its belief that", to the beginning of that one.
4240, you said?
4230.
4230, okay. No objections.
All right. And then 4275, we're striking by creating a framework and adding, "The school board affirms its belief that", at the beginning of that, and then after the word "school year", add the word "framework".
I don't see any objections. No objections.
4280, add, "The school board affirms its belief that", to the beginning of that section and then strike the period. The layoff and recall policy allow these practices to happen.
I have no objection. No objections.
4290, this is identical to the previous one with a slight change of the, of the policy name. The 4290 is the same philosophy as 4280, except there's a policy name difference. It's identical.
Okay. And Mr. Frisch, you have emailed all of us this and the clerk, so it is there in writing. And I, I did review it and I liked all of it, so thank you.
4411.
Oh, we're still going, okay. 4411.
4411 just adds, "The school board affirms its", you know what we could do, is if everybody has this document open in front of them, we could just accept it.
I accept whatever you've said and-
And it's been sent to the clerk.
Okay, well, that's wonderful.
None of this is the substance of the policy, it's all about the philosophy.
Right, and so going forward, we hope that that's what the philosophy begins with, but we didn't get to talk about that. Is there any agreement that any of the policies I just rattled off, 2660 about uniforms, 4101 about responsibilities of Department of H.R., 4140 about physical and mental medical examinations, and 4230, assignment of personnel?
I'm fine with all of them going forward-
Okay.
-with this philosophy change.
Right, and whatever was proposed, if they changed-
Correct.
If there are edits, are you okay with those?
I would be comfortable with the entire slate of Group Bs going forward.
I'm not comfortable with the entire slate.
All right, well, I'm fine with the ones that you mentioned.
So, it sounds like we're going to adopt, without objection, we will adopt the changes that Mr. Frisch submitted by email to the philosophy portions of the noted policies. Would that be fair to say? Okay. And then I would make a motion, or without objection, to move forward to board action, policies 2660, which is uniforms, 4101, which is Department of H.R., 4140, which is the medical examinations, and 4230, which is assignment of personnel. So, without objection, those four will go forward and the other ones will be updated, remain in Group B, and we can review that. I think in terms of the next meeting, I'd like to regroup with each of you and just determine what we think is achievable, but we did a lot. The way to go. And we might need a little bit longer in general, I mean, maybe if we just knock these out in two, two and a half hours, so. Absolutely, yes, if we, that's kind of what I was doing with just these four, but absolutely. So, if the clerks would, I guess, update the ones that Mr. Frisch outlined and those, but let's talk and, but that's what we'll work on next time. And the one that we didn't get to today on the main agenda, which was broadcasting, curricular, and extracurricular events. But well done. So, we've moved two policies from closed, 4450 about communication, 8170 about naming school facilities, and four of those other ones, as well as clean up some philosophy language. Way to go. Thank you. All right, this meeting is adjourned at 5:15 p.m.